All right, you ready to go now? All right, I call this meeting to order of the Union County Board of County Commissioners Thursday, September 2nd, 2021. Mr. Clerk, please call, please call and roll.
Commissioner Garrettson. Commissioner Granados.
Here.
Commissioner Hudak.
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Here.
Commissioner Leon.
Here.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mooded. Commissioner Staton.
Here.
Vice Chair Williams.
Here.
And Chairman Mirabella.
Here.
Chairman, you have seven commissioners present.
Okay, please lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag.
Only we ask God to give her of peace and the lover of charity. Give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. While everybody's putting their video back on, please read, please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
Certainly. The chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of the New Jersey statutes annotated Title X, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meeting Act, adequate notice of this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021 in the administration building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Good evening and welcome to another remote meeting of the Union County Board of County Commissioners. We have several important updates on last night's storm and recovery efforts on Hurricane Ida. Tragically, several members of the Union County community lost their lives to the storm. Our hearts go out to their families and their loved ones. If you need help with shelter, food, or other resources, you can call the Union County Department of Human Services Action Line at 888-845-3434, or 908-558-2288. The Action Line is open for extended hours until 6 o'clock tonight, or call them tomorrow during the, their regular hours of 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. I want to take a minute to commend the hundreds of Union County personnel and first responders who worked throughout the night to help people with life-threatening situations. Staff from Public Works, the Parks Department, along with our first responders continued to work to restore our roads, our facilities, to get them into working condition. I want to thank them for their hard work and all their efforts, our first responders and our Public Works and Parks Department. Particularly, I want to note Director Andrew Moran for his work, along with the County Manager, County Manager Oatman, and the Deputy County Manager Wagner for their help organizing the county response. We all knew a storm was coming. I don't think anybody knew it was coming to that magnitude, but we were prepared and we responded how we could. Human Services is making every effort to help those in need. Director Anderson is doing a terrific job as usual. I'd like to thank officials in Cranford particularly, who are working with us to open the Cranford Recreation Center as a countywide shelter for those left homeless by the disaster. It always, is always, is heartwarming to me that a town like Cranford, almost arguably the most hardly hit flooding situations, are the first to open up their community center for all of the counties. So I congratulate, I really want to thank Cranford and when we, our heart goes out to all those residents who are dealing with the aftermath of this dreaded storm. Our Meals on Wheels program was also impacted by the storm, and it damaged the building that houses the equipment and supplies, working with local restaurants to resume deliveries as soon as possible. A number of county offices were closed today due to the storm damage, including the administration building, our courts, the clerk, the county clerk, and the surrogates office in Elizabeth. Our parks were also impacted. Please visit the county website at ucnj.org for updates on the status of the offices and the facilities for Friday. Again, we want to express our deepest appreciation for everyone that has gone above and beyond to help our community through this storm and the aftermath. As a reminder, our frontline health workers have been out there every day since the beginning of this COVID pandemic, starting with our testing program in March of 2020 and adding vaccinations in January of this year. These lifesaving programs are free and open to the public, the Union County residents. Please get vaccinated now, if you haven't already done so, and encourage your family and friends to get vaccinated as well. Before we go on to the rest of our business, tonight's meeting, I'd like to draw your attention to the 20th anniversary of the attacks of September 11th, 2001. Many of our residents, members of this board included, continue to feel the pain and loss from that day. Each year, we gather together in remembrance of those who were taken from us and in support of those who remain. I know there's events taking place in many of our communities around Union County. We, the county, will also be holding a countywide ceremony at the Union County September 11th Memorial in Echo Lake Park in Mountainside, beginning at 11 o'clock the morning of Saturday, September 11th. I hope to see you there. Also, I want to mention and share respect for the 13 American servicemen and women who were killed in Afghanistan last week. They served our nation with honor and dignity. Let's observe, please, a moment of silence for those American heroes and the residents we lost yesterday in the storm. With a moment of silence. Thank you. Those who are returning home from Afghanistan deserve our respect and appreciation. We are proud to support the veterans and active duty military of the Union County family and our community. If you need guidance or assistance or resources, please get in touch with the Union County Office on Veteran Services at 908-527-4918. And now let's get to the business of tonight's meeting. I'll start off by asking our administrator of the Board of Elections, Nicole Dorado, to present her resolutions. Hi Nicole.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. I hope you're all doing well after last night's storm. The Board of Elections has five resolutions on the agenda for this evening for your consideration. I'd be very happy to answer any questions.
Okay, fellow commissioners, I have your lineup card. You raise your hand and we'll ask for everybody to, I'll call on them. At this point, Nicole, I don't see anybody, but thank you. I know you're preparing well for two months from now, the general elections quickly coming upon us, and please, please let your staff know that we appreciate their efforts in preparation for the upcoming election. Thank you for your efforts, too.
I will, and thank you, Chairman.
We're going to move to the Department of Economic Development, and that is our Deputy County Manager, Amy Wagner.
Good evening, commissioners. The Department of Economic Development has three resolutions for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, no question at this time, so thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Madam Vice Chair, do you have a question?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm sorry, I couldn't get my, to my button. Deputy County Manager, can you just elaborate a little bit on number two?
Number two, yes. So there are a couple of communities that have programs that generate program income, and they are allowed to redirect that income to other projects and programs. And it happens once, usually once a year, sometimes twice, depending on how much they've accumulated. And in this case, the city of Raway and the city of Plainfield have each requested to use program income. In the city of Plainfield, it's largely used to fund their community development office, the administrative costs of operating there. And in Raway, there are a large number of things that it's split between, including code enforcement, administration of these programs. There's also a road project that this will help clean, like finish up too, and that's all money that they generated for programs that brought money back into the program.
Great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thanks, Vice Chair. We are going to move now to the Department of Engineering, Public Works, and Facilities, and that will be Director Graziano.
Good evening, Chairman, good evening, commissioners. I have five items on the agenda for your consideration tonight. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Okay, I love that you're outside, Director. That's great.
Nice after last night.
Yeah, for sure. Any questions for Director Graziano? Okay, Director, doesn't appear to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner.
And keep up the work. Let your gang know that we're so happy with their work overnight, as well as our first responders, your team, and Director Zubers' team out there cleaning up streets, keep, trying to get them as safe as possible, and and we really appreciate all your, your efforts in the leadership there, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chairman. I will definitely spread that word. Thank you.
We'll move to the Department of Finance, and that is Director Taylor.
Evening, Chairman and members of the board. The Department of Finance has eight resolutions for your consideration this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for Director Taylor? These look like all like grants that we are receiving. Is that right, Director?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, and we're thankful for these grants, and we'll be happy to put them in our budget, so. Thank you, and nice work, Director. Appreciate it. We'll move to the Department of Human Services, Director Anderson.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. The Department of Human Services has 11 resolutions on, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, Director. Any questions for Director Anderson?
Yes.
Yes, Vice Chair, please.
Yes, hi, Director Anderson. Could you please elaborate on number six?
Sure, Vice Chair. The number six is really about our operational expenses at Reynolds that was not charged in the 2020 year due to COVID. So it is a part of our lease agreement with Reynolds is to pay the taxes and other shared portions of the facility. So it's something that wasn't, and we have to pay it this year, so that's what we're doing.
Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you, Chairman.
Very good. Thank you, Vice Chair. All right, Director, I think after the immediate emergency management, the first response, clearing the roads, then kind of falls onto you to help out our residents who need the help in the aftermath of that storm, so I can proactively thank you for all your efforts in the next coming weeks, helping our residents, whether it's infrastructure, housing problems, places to stay, some food, that's going to fall on your shoulders, and you have proven only to be very, very well able to handle that, and we, we thank you for your efforts, and please send word from the commissioners and myself that we appreciate what your staff has done so far, what they will do, so thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. It's definitely a team effort.
Thank you, Director. We'll move on to the Department of Parks and Recreation, and that's Director Zuber.
Okay, trying to get my video on here. The host has stopped my video. Okay, there you go. Good evening, everyone. Department of Parks and Recreation has two items on tonight's agenda, and I'll try to answer any questions you have.
Okay, any questions for Director Zuber? Okay, no, no questions. All right, thank you, Director.
Thank you.
We'll move to the Department of Public Safety, and that is Director Moran. Director, thank you, and you heard me say in my initial comments how much I appreciate you. It seemed very interesting. I know Commissioner Hudak and Commissioner Granados and I were able to be with you just yesterday afternoon in the Frolic Building, in the Public Safety Building, kind of breaking ground on the new communication center, and then to see some of the pictures, literally five or six hours later, how you were dealing with the water that was coming into the, to that building, and how you were able to continue to have dispatch up and running and communication out to the community. I mean, I really can't appreciate your efforts and your staff's efforts more, and I know that, you know, there's still a lot of work to do, but so far you've done a terrific job leading your department, getting, getting our, keeping our residents as safe as, as we could do, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, it was, it was a very challenging night with a a lot of obstacles, you know, thrown in the way of first responders throughout the county who, you know, really answered the call as my department heads, fellow department heads did to, to pitch in when we were certainly in crisis here, and, you know, I know all the first responders around the county stepped up and did a phenomenal job, but, you know, that being said, our hearts are heavy for the five residents that didn't make it through, and you know, our thoughts are with them and their family during this most difficult time, so, thank you. The department has five resolutions for your consideration. I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, before I turn it over to see if there's any questions, I want to just let the board know and the clerk know that Commissioner Garrettson has joined us, so she's a part of our meeting, too. Welcome, Commissioner Garrettson. Any questions for Director Moran? Okay, Director, I don't see any. Keep up the good work and get some, get some more rest. I know you had a little one-hour nap probably in the last 24 hours, but get some more sleep and get back at it. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Chairman.
All right, we'll move to the Office of County Council, and that's County Council Bergen. Hi, Bruce.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, everybody. Office of the County Council has two resolutions for your consideration tonight. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, County Council Bergen. Any questions for the County Council? Doesn't appear to be, so thank you, Bruce.
Thank you, Chairman.
We'll move to the Office of the County Manager, County Manager Oatman.
Thank you, Chairman. I have one item on tonight's agenda. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the County Manager? Vice Chair Williams.
Yes, hi, County Manager. Yeah, regarding that resolution for improvements to the Plaza, the Jerry Green Plaza, it's been a long time coming, so I'm glad to see this resolution on. Given everything that, you know, we've just experienced, was there a date by which we were going to try to start and complete this, this kind of big project?
Well, that's a good question, Vice Chair. As you and I have discussed, the cement on the atrium and the whole area around there is pretty chopped up. It's broken from the snow, the ice, the plowing. This resolution will allow us to go out and get some quotes to repair all that cement work, and then, you know, weather permitting, we'll begin as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, VC. Any questions for the County Manager? Doesn't appear to be. Thank you, Ed. See, there's Commissioner-sponsored resolutions. Any comments at this point on those? Seem pretty straightforward. Okay, I think our business for our agenda meeting is complete, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Removed. Second.
All right, I'm gonna pick Commissioner Staton for the motion and Commissioner Lortes Leon for the second. Mr. Clerk, please call and roll.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes.
Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak.
Aye.
Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Staton.
Yes.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
Chairman Mirabella.
Aye.
Chairman, that's eight votes in the affirmative for the adjournment of the agenda setting session.
All right, we are in adjournment of our agenda meeting. We will move Jim, as long as, as long as you tell me otherwise, we're already going right into our regular meeting.
Chairman, that'll be fine. They can go directly into our regular meeting.
All right, I call this meeting to order of the Union County Board of County Commissioners Thursday, September 2nd, 2021. Regular meeting. Mr. Clerk, please call and roll.
Commissioner Garrettson. See you're present. Commissioner Granados.
Here.
Commissioner Hudak.
Here.
Kowalski.
Yeah.
Commissioner Leon.
Here.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mooded. Commissioner Staton.
Here.
Vice Chair Williams.
Here.
Chairman Mirabella.
Present.
I mean, you have eight commissioners present for the regular setting, the regular meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Please lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag.
Only we ask God to give her of peace and the lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Mr. Clerk, please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act.
Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements, New Jersey statutes annotated Title X, Chapter 4, Section 10, Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for your 2021, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstances to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021 in the administration building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve the communications?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by the Vice Chair and seconded by Commissioner Staton. Mr. Clerk, please call and roll.
Commissioner Garrettson. Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yeah.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
Chairman Mirabella.
Aye.
Chairman, that's eight votes in the affirmative on the communication.
Very good. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 12th, 2021 agenda meeting and regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kowalski, seconded by Vice Chair Williams. Mr. Clerk, please call and roll.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak.
Abstained.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yeah.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Staton.
Yes.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
Chairman Mirabella.
Upstate.
Chairman, you have six votes in the affirmative with two abstentions on both meeting minutes.
Very good. Thank you. May I have a motion to suspend the rules to allow for the joining of both the public comments on resolutions being offered for adoption and the public comment for any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the Union County into one public comment session.
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair, seconded by Commissioner Granados. Mr. Clerk, please call and roll.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yeah.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Staton.
Yes.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
Chairman Mirabella.
Aye.
I mean, you have eight votes in the affirmative for the suspension of the rules.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The meeting is now open to the public wishing to speak on resolutions being offered for adoption or any other matter. Mr. Clerk, who do we have lined up for that tonight?
Currently have one individual in the queue, by the name of Mr. Bruce Patterson.
Okay, I'll open the floor to Mr. Patterson. Please state your name and township of residence, and please go ahead with your comments.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and Dr. Garrettson and the Commissioner Board. This is Bruce Patterson, Garwood, New Jersey. The Rezo, Rezo 650 is giving $7,000 to A and B Promotions at Cranford for promotional materials. Please explain what products we are buying. And I just want to note, this company has only been in business for two years with no full track record. The principal is a Ms. Wallrab. I'm just wondering, is this person a relative of the Wallrabs that ran with your slate for Freeholders about 10 years back? Rezo 658, this is giving $10,000 to Mandell Lead Inspectors for lead inspection in homes. Around three, four years ago, we bought a very expensive lead detection device for this exact same service for the county to check out lead in homes. Did our device break already? Rezo 662, this is modifying the budget for $55,000 for a program titled Raway 2021 Special Election Grant. The wording is rather open-ended. Is, is Raway actually granting $55,000 to the county? So I need that answer. Rezo 665, this is $222,000 being passed through our budget for a program called Area Plan Contract. Please clarify what this means. Rezo 666, this is adding $726,000 for early voting reimbursement phase two grant. Are we using the federal stimulus monies passed through the state for this? And I don't have an exact number, but I'll tell you, a running total of these election-related resolutions is now over $8 million. That's a comment. Rezo 667, this is for executing a grant, unknown amount from when I saw the last agenda, for improvements to the Jerry Green Plaza. I heard a little bit about concrete. Is upgrading a plaza acceptable use for the American Rescue Plan stimulus monies? And what exactly needs rescuing at the Jerry Green Plaza? Please explain. Rezo 672, this is increasing Mott McDonald's contract, which is $180,000, another $77,000 to $257,000 for additional engineering and inspection of Arlenby Park Dam. County bylaw state increases over 20% contracts really need to be rebid out. Exactly why is this $77,000 freely given out? Rezo 673, this gives Louis Barbado Landscaping of Hallbrook, New York, $90,000 to plant trees in our county parks. New Jersey companies couldn't do this? Why didn't you hire them? In fact, couldn't our DPW workforce plant these saplings and save us taxpayers $90,000? Something needs clearing up here. Rezo 677, this is adding $4,000 to the Hart Grant Program for This Is It Productions for a new total of $119,000. 2021-090 already allocated $115,000 in Hart Grant. Suddenly you're adding more money. Sounds like a violation of the covenant, since it's right after the federal. Doesn't the county need to abide by their own rules and regulations? Rezo 679, this is amendment of lease agreement with the main Reynolds operating company to add an extra $22,000 to cover leasing payments. I do understand that explanation. Why are we paying it now? Why didn't we pay it last year? And why is the county paying how much tax rate with that fee?
Mr. Patterson, let me stop you for a second. It's unclear to me what the question is around 679. I don't know if it came clear to other people, but I couldn't understand what you were saying.
Okay, 679, that's, you're paying 4.6 million in Reynolds, and you're adding an extra $22,000 to cover lease and tax payments. And for some reason, you didn't pay it last year. That's wrong. Why wasn't it paid last year? And why are we actually paying taxes? Because property taxes, we're already, it's tax free. Let's continue on. Increase in legal services, number 688, another $50,000 to $150,000, a long draft of litigation on the new tax government. What exactly is this for? What happened to the previous bonus that's packed with $100,000 legal bill for the same work? We're looking at over $250,000 for one legal process on a new project and it's shovel hot, moving every project. This has become a pure boom bottle, something I warned you now about three times in a row. With my 35 years experience of bidding major projects, which we ask no false directly on big fail. With my thirty-five years of experience of bidding major projects, which we ask so false directly on Biggie Taylor's shoulders, she botched up Big Time. I have no experience as Project Matt, you knew it. I see no leadership in the commissioner nor the UCI. We strongly suggest you get the UCI to fire Biggie Taylor immediately from doing Project Matt and even cancel this new governing complex the way it is and start all over to bid it properly. Uh number six eighty-nine, designated with Valence Goldman, law firm, to pursue the opioid epidemic litigation. Why are we spending money on the county network? Because the Attorney General is actually of the state, and the Jersey is also suing, so this is really a a wasteful duplication. We shouldn't be doing anything, just waiting for the state to finish up with their lawsuits against the.
All right, all right, Mr. Patterson, I gave you a couple of extra minutes because I asked for clarification on some of your questions, but your time is up and we'll start answering a few of your questions. So let's move to uh six, six fifty and six fifty-eight, and that will be Director Anderson. Do you think those?
Sure. Six fifty, um A and B product promotions is really for materials, outreach materials for our division of Outreach and Advocacy. Due to COVID, we have a lot more um outside in-person meetings with um our residents and constituents, and it's really giveaways and contact information um items for them to know what resources are available and how they get in contact with county departments that can deliver those services. And six fifty. And you said six fifty-eight?
Yes.
Oh, that's, that's not me. That's for lead. Yeah.
All right, who, who's gonna handle that? Um Director Graziano, Director Moran?
Yes, Chairman. Uh through you, uh our Health Department uh did uh purchase uh lead detection equipment, and we trained our inspectors uh to go into houses that um where children have tested positive for lead poisoning to do an assessment of that, that um equipment is in good working order, and uh our inspectors are doing that. Uh this is a grant-funded uh program, and uh this contract just allows us that uh safety that to assure that those inspections are done on a timely basis as our Health Department um moves into more shared services and uh their resources are stretched. So it just assures that those um inspections are done on a timely basis. And it's a not exceed number. We don't expect to spend uh ten thousand.
Uh thank you, Director Moran. Uh Director Taylor, I think you have uh six sixty-two, sixty-five, and sixty-six. Can you uh add some information for that, please?
Sure, through you, Chairman. Resolution six sixty-two is a special item of revenue to recoup funds expended on behalf of the City of Rawway for the special school board election. And so it's to cover costs associated with printing ballots, postage, advertisement, and IT support. Resolution six sixty-five is modifying the budget to accept additional funds offered by the New Jersey Department of Human Services for the area plan, that is for services associated with making the COVID-nineteen vaccine accessible to older Americans, excuse me, older adults, people with disabilities, and caregivers impacted by the pandemic. Resolution six sixty-six is a special item of revenue awarded by the New Jersey Department of State to administer early voting consistent with public law two thousand and twenty-one, Chapter forty.
Uh thank you, Director. We'll move on to uh the County Manager, six sixty-seven.
Uh thank you, Chairman. I can probably handle a couple of the questions. I do have to say, um, I'm not quite sure what the questions were. The uh, the connection was, was, wasn't pretty good. It was a bit of a boondoggle. But um for six sixty-seven, yes, it's an appropriate use of the funds. The county, the city, local groups use all, use the courtyard for uh meeting space and activities. So ensuring that it's safe and they don't hurt themselves is a subtle use of the funds. Um for six eighty-eight, um I think the question was, what's it for? It says in the resolutions for legal services. Um they're defending the county on the uh frivolous lawsuit filed by Dobco. Um I also believe there's a mention of how much we're spending on elections. Um I'm not quite sure what that was about. The county's job is to have safe, fair, open elections, so I don't sure how you can have a dollar value to that. Uh the county clerk and um our elections folks will do a great job, so I'm not sure how we're counting pennies on that, but that's what elections cost, and they're mandated by the state, and we can't help when there's special elections.
So that's, that's all.
That answered the uh, the questions.
Well, I'm sure it did. I mean, you know, particularly this boondoggle that comes up every time, it's kind of questions about this. You seem like they're a, a little out of line, but all right, that's fine. I think you explained it fine.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yep, we'll move to Director Graziano, six seventy-two. Do you have some updates you could provide for that, Director?
Through you, Chairman, absolutely. Um six seventy-two is uh with Matt McDonald. I guess the question was um the twenty percent rules. The local public contracts law does not apply to professional services. This is an ongoing uh project for our dams, and we're gonna finally get that dam worked on. It's gonna start, um it's starting Wednesday as far as the construction. All the trees are getting removed there, so it's an ongoing project. We gotta add some work to them, and this is fully within the law as far as that goes. Um six seventy-three with um with uh Louis Barbado. This is a publicly bid project. I would love for a New Jersey-based uh uh company to get this, but unfortunately they did not. There was two companies that bid it, Barbado and this other company who bid it, and um Barbado usually gets it every year. Um this is not county tax dollars, by the way. This is motor vehicle fines, and these are fully two to three-year. They're planted. They're not saplings. There's also a one-year maintenance and uh watering on these as well. This is for all of our county roads and our county parks. That's your question, sir.
It does. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Uh Director Zubor, six seventy-seven.
Uh through you, Mr. Chair, six seventy-seven. Uh the, the agenda that Mr. Patterson was looking at went out earlier in the week. Uh it erroneously, erroneously stated This Is It Productions. It should have stated the Union County Latino Chamber of Commerce, which is a five oh one. And uh we apologize for that error, but um it is a uh, it, it is a a group that is a nonprofit that is going to be doing events for Hispanic Heritage Month here, here at Union County.
Okay, it's, it's uh dollars well, well spent and in the right direction. It'll be a terrific celebration of Hispanic heritage. Uh I have Director Anderson for six seventy-nine. Director, is that you, for you, you could comment on that quickly?
Absolutely. Through you, Chair. Um you know, one of the things we have to remember, Reynolds, last year, Reynolds is um also a long-term living facility um and really encountered a lot of fatalities and others through COVID. Um with that, it was a difficult transition with their management team, and we received our bills later in the year, and that is why we are paying it now instead of last year. And it again, it's for the taxes, utilities, um and insurance that covers, and that's where the extra um twenty-two thousand increase came from. So through you, Chair, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Director Anderson. Um County Council Bergen, can you handle the last two, six eighty-eight and six eighty-nine? A couple of seconds on that, please.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Uh just on six eighty-eight to, to uh amplify what the county manager said. Um this is a large project. We uh have legal advice outside council helping us. Um there is no double billing for the same work. We've had different uh firms, but they bill us based on the amount of work they're doing. Uh unfortunately, with the litigation, which we have to defend to get this project going, uh those, those fees are going up, but um we, we have done nothing wrong other than to just um get legal advice and defend uh what we have to. This project is hopefully going to be moving along shortly. Um on the second, second one can confirm, uh concerning the opioid litigation, this is in fact just a change of uh uh employment for the attorney. We're not hiring a new firm. It's the same attorney, but he closed his own firm and went in with Will Lance, so we're just changing the name uh on, on the uh resolution so his new firm can get paid. I will say that um we did file this litigation a number of years ago, uh at which time it was not clear that we would be represented by the Attorney General. In fact, the courts have determined that the attorneys general across the country uh are, are the ones negotiating the settlement, but we are involved. We do have a say in those settlements, and, and we are well-served having filed our own lawsuit and having our own counsel. Thank you.
All right, tha- thank you, County Council. I think that wraps that up. Mr. Clerk, is there anybody else who uh, who wishes to participate? I think you have a an email with some commentary that you're gonna go through?
Chairman, that is correct. There are no other individuals in our queue for tonight's meeting, but I did receive one email from Mr. John Burry.
Okay, go ahead and read that, please.
First, great format, and even when, if this pandemic is over, you should consider continuing this way. Works for me. I have one general comment, actually an appreciation, and a couple of accountant questions at the end. I have been following and often coming to these meetings for about fifteen years now, and has been mostly irritating, but I've never felt intimidated or that you were going to get back at me in some way. There were instances like Caricelli cursing me out at the end of a meeting where I may have pointed out is getting lifetime health benefits for himself, and there was that guy from Hillside. I blacked out on his name, Charlotte's boy, who physically threatened me at a music fest and made lewd remarks within my hearing about Tina Renna, but it never got to a point where I felt threatened for my safety. There were also smirks and snide remarks, basically juvenile, but I never, one, once did I take them seriously. And I don't recall ever being prevented from speaking or told to shut up and sit down. The one time it was done by Sullivan to Bruce Patterson, there was an AL, ACLU involvement and a token apology, which might have had something to do with it. However, after three meetings in Kenneworth, which gets no coverage and basically in a bubble, when I was trying to find out why campaign donors were getting millions of dollars fees and doing work for developers that taxpayers were paying for, I was slandered and shut down. I sent a mailer to all Kenneworth households on what I found, and among the responses, video he provided had me showing an anonymous envelope with a ripped mailer and the message I got from it. I won't get into the details of the abuse I have taken, but I do feel threatened and have installed a security camera at my home, and I don't want to say what stage of the process I'm at, but I'm basically gotten another protection. If within the time limit, I was going to append what happened at the council meeting at the end of the video comment, but I was told that it was not going to be shown here. I have sent three videos to the Clerk of the Board for the record, as much as that is possible. I realize what I say here has little impact beyond you knowing someone is watching, since you do what you are told. However, when there are legitimate questions, you try to answer them. I remember when I started coming, questions were never answered, and it is now both instructional and a relief. For example, I spoke against that stupid solar panel project, but it went ahead and the bonds defaulted, and now the UCIA has to come up with projects, maybe the Kenneworth Public Life, Public Safety Building next, to pay off the defaulted bonds. But the point is, the project went ahead, but my disapproval of it on the record, which would have not been had you told me you were tired of hearing my BS a minute into my objections. I'm still paying for it, but I know I did all I could. That did not happen in Kenneworth, and for all the tolerance you show here, buttresses arguments of right group, that government is a cesspool of corruption, where the little people have no voice. Now to my questions. I looked into accountants doing county budgets and what they made in campaign donations, and the first one I look at was Suppley Clooney. But then I looked at the two thousand and twenty-one budgets and found they were no longer Union County auditors after what had might have been twenty years. Video has me showing a list of twelve accounting firms and total contributions as reported on NJ Elect. What I found is that Bowman and Company does four counties and made about one point two million in donations, but it's hard to see if they contribute to counties they were auditing at the time. I'll do it eventually, but it would help to have this question answered. Are accountants doing municipal work either barred or limited in making campaign donations to those who hired or will hire them to do that work? I believe this may be so, since the two, twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars near the low end that Suppley Clooney accountants donated over, overall, they donated nothing since two thousand and six to Union County people. Following up on that, why was Suppley Clooney replaced, or was that part of the reason? Thank you for your time.
All right, thanks for, thanks for reading that, uh Jim. I'm gonna ask the County Manager to address that. Uh County Manager Omen, please.
Sure, Chairman. Thank you very much. And first, I want to thank the uh, the constituent for the kind words about our process and how, you know, hospitable we are. Uh as for our audit or auditors, Suppley Clooney is still part of our team, as is Will Cox and Associates. It's uh, the orders is based on a competitive process. Uh as for donations, I really have no idea who donates what or where, but we have a competitive process, and it's open to anybody to apply, and Suppley is still part of our team.
Ed, thank you, and I appreciate you, John. All right, so noting that there are no other comments, I'll formally close this portion of the meeting and ask to have a motion to adopt Resolutions two thousand and twenty-one to six four seven through two thousand and twenty-one dash six nine nine. May I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Granados, seconded by the Vice Chair. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Yes.
Commissioner Houdak?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yeah.
Commissioner Leon?
Yes.
Commissioner Staton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chairman Mirabella?
Aye.
And we have eight affirmative votes on all the resolutions.
Okay, uh thank you, everyone. We're gonna move on to Commissioner reports and comments, and I'm gonna start with Commissioner Leon.
Good evening, everyone. Um I just want to briefly state that I'm truly thankful to all the Union County personnel for their hard work last night during the storm. Police, first responders, EMT, the Parks Department, special services, uh public safety, thank you for all your hard, non-stop work during this horrible storm. My heart goes out to the families that have lost their homes and material stuff, but hopefully they'll all get that back as long as they're alive, that, which is the most important thing. In closing, I just want to mention that I'm looking forward to Hispanic Heritage Month. It's my first year as Commissioner, so I'm gonna truly enjoy that. And it starts on September twelfth, and we're gonna have a nice Hispanic Heritage flag raising. I hope to see everyone there and a lot of activities for our community. Um in closing, I just want to say, stay safe, everyone, and have a nice Labor Day weekend. Thank you.
You, Commissioner. Appreciate that. Commissioner Kowalski?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh wanted to add my condolences to the families who lost loved ones during the storm and uh sympathies to those flooding damage and, and lost possessions. Um uh thanks to all of our public safety personnel and public works and park staff who helped during last night's storm. There's much to be done. Um the cleanup is already starting, and as usual, Union County will be helping our cities and towns with that. Um my town, Cranford, uh had a large portion of our town underwater. Uh some of it is still underwater. Um let me just mention that this has happened before uh during Hurricane Sandy and Irene, as well as in the April fifteenth storm of two thousand and seven and the October nineteen ninety-nine storm. Um Union County and local mayors and flood control commissions have been working to get a major flood control project done in our area. Um our Democratic representatives in Washington have been steadfast in their support for this, but up to now, we haven't had approval from uh the Army Corps of Engineers. Uh but with help from Senators Mendez and Booker and Congressman Malanowski and Payne, we're getting closer and to moving forward to a flood control project. Um Hurricane Ida shows. Sorry, this is, I'm sorry we've had to wait this long and go through another disruptive storm, but uh I, I hope that uh the next one will be more prepared for, and we'll have a flood project. So thank you, Chairman. That's it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Kowalski. Commissioner Granados?
Aye, Chairman. Um let me call, I want to start by thanking our first responders who went above and beyond during the hurricane, but also the tremendous um sacrifice and tremendous help that our own.
But also the tremendous um sacrifice and tremendous help that our own Union County residents were providing to one another. Not only by making phone calls, but you know, we saw a video of even Morse Avenue in Elizabeth yesterday where someone was basically um drowning more or less, going into one of the local bridges on Morse Avenue. And how a group of residents formed together with a rope to get this individual out of the bridge that was kind of taking them in with the flooding water. And it just goes to show the resilience that our Union County residents have and how in times of need we band together as one. So with that, that's one story of many that probably happened across not only the county but across the country. So I just wanna thank everyone from our first responders to our residents who are making phone calls, checking on neighbors, making phone calls to make sure they're checking on their loved ones and making sure that we continue to be there for one another. So with that said, I wanna thank everybody on this commission board too for your hard efforts, along with our county manager administration and public safety director. That's it, Chairman. Aye, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Granados for for correcting yourself. Uh Commissioner Houdak?
Thank you, Chairman. Um you know, y- you you mentioned this in your your comments earlier today. But you know, at about five o'clock last night, uh you, Commissioner Granados, county manager, uh Director Moran, many of other individuals were uh from the first responders in Union County. Were at a ceremony to talk about the expansion of our dispatch. And I think it's something that we're proud of and and a valued service. Uh talking a little bit to Director Moran before the meeting. Um you know, in in twenty-four hours, typically our call center receives about five hundred calls. In the last twenty-four hours, they've received thirty-one hundred forty-seven calls. Um in fact, about eight hundred an hour. And and it just speaks to the need uh of that particular service. Um and and the coordination that that we provide. And and I'm hoping um and I'm hearing great feedback about the the assistance our our county shared services are providing in this crisis. But certainly uh hats off to uh all of the local uh first responders in the communities. Because this is really just because of the water coming down so fast. Uh this was a situation where um local police and fire were really on their own to make um good decisions to stabilize. As as uh to Commissioner Granados's point, we're residents and you know, just in in my neighborhood. Um you know, my home was fortunate. Driving down the street, there were many homes uh or driving down the street this morning just to take a look around, I noticed many cars that had been abandoned because people were just driving on their way home from work around six thirty and suddenly the road flooded. And and many good Samaritans all over Union County, all over New Jersey, just took in their neighbors uh to make sure that they were safe. And that was a a wonderful thing. So um certainly that was heartening. And also might, you know, hearts go out to those who who lost their lives, including the the family in in Elizabeth and Oakwood Plaza. And anyone else who um lost a loved one in this storm. And it's just um it's concerning because, you know, as a commissioner, I've been through two or three one hundred year storms in ten years. And I believe this one is considered, I think, maybe a two to five hundred year storm. So um there there there's an intense in intensifying frequency of these major disasters. Um and we're certainly taking steps as elected officials to have better infrastructure in Union County to who uh to make um the reaction and the response better. But it I think it's underscoring the port that we have a a serious problem. We talk about climate change and and what the impact is going to be. And and these problems are not going away. In fact, they're intensifying. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Houdak. Commissioner Stateen?
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us this evening. First, I'd like to also send my thoughts and prayers to everyone affected um by Hurricane Ida. Thank you to the emergency management team and first responders for their boots on the ground from the beginning um up until now. They're still working. Um we really appreciate all of your hard work throughout the county and uh the many towns that uh were affected. Um I also like to mention, uh last Sunday, we held our first um annual car show honoring our first responders and frontline uh heroes. It was a huge success. It was very well attended and we are looking forward to doing a bigger one uh next year. So thank you to everyone who allowed me to bring this vision to life and um everyone that helped the event to be a huge success. I would also like to wish Commissioner Sergio Granados a very happy birthday. We celebrated his birthday yesterday, virtually. So we'd just like to wish him many, many more. Um I'd like to also wish everyone a happy Labor Day and this concludes my comments. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Stateen. Appreciate that. Commissioner Garrettson?
Thank you, Chairman. Um as a former mayor of Hillside, I just remember when we had such an impact of us of rain. And so it really reminded me, I was wondering if the boats were gonna come out. Um so it was very rewarding this morning. Last night I had a friend call me who was who got stuck in Linden and actually didn't get home until today. So it was truly a a challenge to navigate the roadways. And so beyond just so many of our traditional folks that we must award and thank for the good work they did throughout the night and into today. Because it wasn't just a one hour, two hour, it was ongoing and scary. But it also reminded me of of something I wanna really thank so many people who participated from the sheriff's office. Um recently, we had a three-on-three basketball tournament in Hillside at Conia Park. And let me just tell you, their leadership, their professionalism um was so inspiring for so many young men and women from the community. And not only did they win, they came in not first or second, but they came in third place. But they truly exhibited what we only could hope for in leaders and some of our public servants. So I just wanna give them a big shout out. I wanna thank the sheriff. I really wanna thank um the the young men, or I should say young adults who really came through that day. So we have some other departments who have something to look forward to, so we could put them on the court as well one of these days. But I also wanted to specifically shout out a couple other folks who really made an amazing movie night that really turned into a community day with community sponsors. Really was an effective use of time, effort, and also just coming together. So I wanna thank specifically the Department of um not the Human Services, excuse me. I wanna thank the leadership under Ron. I wanna thank all of the folks who came out that day. Truly, truly, everybody's collaboration was appreciated and valued. Um I wanna thank all of the administrators who were able to stop by. Um and of course, we did vaccines. Not only do we do vaccines, but we did it for AIDS group that typically historically don't always get vaccinated. And that group would be the twenty-year-old. So there were several young folks who were there who don't typically get vaccinated. But because of what we did, they are now signed up and ready to go. So I just wanna thank everybody who contributed to time and effort because it really was time well spent. I also wanna say that we are now back into the school mode. So I wanna congratulate all of our students that are entering the new school year. But most importantly, we wanna really prayer pray and support all of our teachers. Because we know this is going to be, again, this is, they have not been in the school buildings for a long time. So I really wanna make sure that we support them in any way we can. Uh we will be sponsoring some more events coming up this um September. So please keep a lookout for our calendar. All of the commissioners, we continue to make sure that we're on the front lines, not only during moments that are difficult. But I wanna again make sure that we have this information provided. So with the storm, the information that the chair that you provided was very critical. We know that FEMA and if there are other different resources that you need, please reach out to us because we will hopefully steer you in the right direction. And yes, happy birthday to our commissioner over there, Sergio Granados. We were excited to see that on the rainy day you brought it for us. So happy birthday to you. Um and to everyone who took the time to support everyone during the storm. God bless you. Um be well and thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Garrettson. Appreciate that. We'll move on to our Vice Chair, Vice Chair Williams.
Thank you, Chairman. Um I I really don't have a lot to add to what everyone else has said. Certainly, um I I wanna thank all of the first responders and um the 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 work that was done by the county, working with all the local governments to really, you know, try and get us through this uh very, very difficult and tragic storm. Um and my thoughts as well are with those who have lost somebody. And for those um hundreds of people who are are now um without a home. So I'm hoping that we can, you know, um increase our resources to assist those folks as well. And um I did just want to just reiterate something you said at the very beginning of the meeting, which was to remind everyone of our um commemoration of the twentieth anniversary of nine eleven next Saturday. Uh a week from Saturday at um at um Echo Lake Park uh on Saturday, September eleventh. And um I too would like to wish everyone a a a wonderful Labor Day. And happy birthday to uh my my colleague there. And I hope everyone has a a really good and safe, safe, long weekend. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Appreciate that. I have a just a couple of uh of comments um to add to what I've already said. First, I do agree with Commissioner Stateen that the car show was a fun uh event. And it gave us a chance, I think, to uh highlight our new uh facility there at Oakridge Park. And it was really a a good time. And I wish uh the Commissioner good luck in her daughter going to school. She's in uh in Connecticut at school and uh I know you miss her, but she's uh she's doing well and getting settled, I'm sure. I'm gonna gonna do a great job i- in in college. So congratulations to you, Commissioner Stateen and to all our returning college students and and high school students and students of all um ages. I'm glad to see the school year starting and you're kind of a little bumpy now. Some some schools started and we're off today. You know, we know we have the Jewish holidays coming up and Labor Day. So it's a it's a good time of year. And uh and I hope that it's nice to see the the children, you know, back in the classroom. I think that's great for students and uh teachers. I hope that is able to continue and I look forward to that. I wanna point out, one of the resolutions we had on tonight was the uh the congratulations for retiring Assignment Judge Karen Cassidy. Uh Judge Cassidy was a terrific partner of this administration and this board in all her years as the Assignment Judge. She did a wonderful job uh in the judiciary, managing that uh to a huge job. Uh but also is known for for uh a few things in particular, her graciousness and in um working with the county administration and this commissioner board. Uh her allowance of us to use her courtroom when we could assemble uh for reorg meetings, always very gracious with that. And certainly her her thumbprint is all over the Family Court building uh that she saw the need for and ensured that we uh worked to completion. So I appreciate uh working a judge with Judge Cassidy and I wish her only uh health and happiness in her retirement. God bless her. I do know that um Commissioner Granados had a birthday yesterday and it was marked with with such fireworks in the uh the storm uh that came with it. I think I'm gonna call you uh Hurricane Granados from now on. It's a it's a something that uh, you know, I didn't, we didn't, we didn't see. But I know you were able to celebrate somewhat uh last night and and congratulations and happy birthday to you. Um I I wanted to also point out um the the great help that we get from our from our three senators at the state level. Uh Senator Kane called me directly. I've spoken to Senator uh Cryin and Senator Skatari. Uh we uh and through through uh my work and the work of this commissioner board, working with uh the the county manager and the deputy county manager, I've had regular communication with our communities and our mayors and business administrators. Tomorrow, there's another call to give them an update on, there's always an update on testing and vaccinations. But also with um emergency response from the the storm. And I appreciate that excellent communication that this county has with our municipalities and our mayors. And I'm looking forward to that. Also, I can tell you that Governor Murphy uh reached out to me directly to see how we were doing in Union County. And if there was anything that he could do to help specifically. And well, that's very very rare that that a governor would do call, you know, directly uh to 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 my to somebody like me uh running a county, working with the uh the other commissioners to do that. But you know, that just shows the the care that he has and and the 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 place in in his heart that Union County ho- Union County holds. So I'm uh thankful Governor Murphy will certainly be taking him up on his offer for support and resources. Uh cuz we need him and our towns need him. So um he's there with us and I'm I'm thankful thankful for him. Um with that, I don't have any other uh comments. Did anybody else have anything they need to add that they forgot or we're okay? All right, so with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair and seconded by Commissioner Houdak. Uh can I have a roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Garrettson?
Yes, and good night.
Granados?
Aye, stay safe, everyone.
Mr. Houdak?
Aye.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Aye.
Yes.
Vice Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chairman Mirabell?
Aye.
Chairman, that's eight votes in the affirmative to adjourn this meeting.
Thank you, everybody, for your help and thanks for the cleanup effort ahead. Appreciate everybody. Thank you, commissioners. Good work.